I would much rather stay with this, absolutely. But we have official school business that we should attend to, so and we are now recording, so I guess we should switch the dialogue. Uh oh, somebody, we have a chat. Therapeutic, yes. Thank you, Dr. Brown. Alright, so I will call this meeting to order. And move to the public comment period if the public has any comments they'd like to share. Tricia, do we have anybody lined up or anything?
Chris, I don't see anyone in the chat and or raised hand.
Alright. So not to be too pushy, I'm going to move it along and if anyone does come in, we will definitely give them time. If that's okay with the fellow committee members. And then I'll just move the minutes from the 1117 meeting. Is everybody good with that? E, Aaron?
Yes.
Yes. Going to refer to you folks as the two Es.
E and E squared.
E squared. Alright, so if we go to consideration of accounts, we've got the treasurer's report, we've got surplus property, which I think Amanda does have a few things that we want to discuss regarding that. And then I thought we had an I P I.
Yep, it's there. It's the last one, 4.5.
Here it goes, down at the bottom. I had to scroll down a little bit. And then we've got I P I donation. So it's not anything new or really except for the surplus items.
That's right. And just one comment, the food service is just a little bit behind, but they're catching up. So just so you see there that September and October. Right? So so just so you're aware, they will catch up eventually. And for that designation and disposal of surplus property, I just, this one is just a little bit unique only because we have had some requests from staff people who are interested in upon designation of surplus of these materials to be able to purchase those materials from the district. And so by law, we can't just do that, right? So because if you think about agencies that maybe might designate something that is surplus so that they could then allow for someone to buy it at a really great price, right? There's laws that are there. So we want to really stay above the bar. So we, Casey and I talked to Dr. Brown around, I think what is probably the easiest option, Paul has experienced auctions before. They're not super successful. They usually actually cost more than what you get in terms of the items. We have our, you know, at our ease of use, Facebook Marketplace. And that's actually an opportunity for us that sort of serves as kind of an auction site. As long as you show that you've posted things and publicly people are able to, you know, sort of throw their hat in the ring to be able to buy those things. It keeps it very honest. We would, Casey would manage it. We'd have sort of like an opening and then like a closing. People can sort of say what they would want to pay if it is that a teacher that really was interested in it. And they're throwing their hat in the ring and they get it because they're the quote lowest bid or, you know, in terms of the last and lowest or last and highest.
Highest, thank you.
I mean, last and highest, then great, right? Then then it's theirs and it's a win-win all around. But I just wanted to alert the board that for these particular items, there have been those requests. So we're not going to just scrap metal this stuff. They're woodworking equipment specifically. And those are going to go on the Facebook Marketplace. We won't do this with everything, but we'll do this with things that have value, right, to others.
And you know, it's actually, I think, in our best interest to rather than dump or, you know, trash any items, make it available as much as we can to to make sure it gets reused. And this is Ethica, so we definitely believe in recycling. So if we can get a couple of dollars, that's also good.
Great. So I just wanted to alert folks, as long as everybody's okay with that, that was just, and again, it's not, we don't have any additional process from the board to do that, except that when we do receive the funds, we would accept it.
Any other questions, comments? Alright, so we'll move to 5.1 budget development transportation. Liz, are you there?
Liz, are you able to unmute?
Yes, hi.
Perfect.
Hello.
And you should also have the rights to be able to present, Liz, if you want to present yourself or we can ask Tricia to do that for you. Whatever is easiest. Okay?
I didn't have a webcam, so I'm like on my phone and my computer, so I'll do my best to share.
Got it. Not a problem at all. And so Liz, as you're getting set up and ready to go. So everyone, I just wanted to alert you, we are well into budget season, obviously, which is year round, but this is the official presentation season, right? So we'll be having departments such as transportation going this evening. We'll have Paul's team, the facilities and utilities coming in January. I think then we have technology in February and then special education in March. So those will be sort of the presentations at Finance Committee. And one thing that I am mortified about that I am going to actually have to put on the board agenda and skip finance is the actual budget calendar. So this is, I think, what, year six or seven for me? And literally I had it on my list and I just completely forgot to bring it this evening. And so if that's okay with you, Chris, that'll, this will be reflected on that budget calendar along with all the other presentations. It's pretty prescribed by law, but Liz is, Liz is going to kick it off for us and save me of my embarrassment of forgetting the calendar. So.
You are definitely forgiven. And I just also wanted to add to that, that I will be sharing at finance meetings, but also the voting board meetings just out to the public that we're going to be looking for questions regarding budget questions that we receive usually in the spring. You know, before we present the budget, any operational questions, how the budget works, where the money goes, different things, we usually get those at the end of the the semester, but we'd like to really try to get ahead of it, answer any questions. So we want to welcome the public in, really do the legwork now rather than at the end of the year, well, the end of the finance year, so to speak. So I'll be saying that at every voting meeting and at these meetings, so please for the public, if you want to ask questions, email myself, Amanda, or another committee member, and then we'll try our best to answer them during these meetings, but also during the voting meeting, so we can try to really get ahead of this to clarify any questions and understanding for the public.
Chris, on 5.2 on the agenda this evening, I included budget communication so that for you and all the other board members in the community as well, our FAQ from last year, Eldred, I know a lot of it was generated based on some of the outreach that you did, Aaron, as well, right? Like just sort of putting that out to Facebook, gathering those questions, one stop shop that people could visit. So I put that in there. We can have some time to review that this evening. If there are things that we might want to start now and think about other methods that we can use versus just print. Um, that's, you know, that that's on the agenda for this evening.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, Liz, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop now. It's all you.
Let me see if I can share this. So it says host disabled participants screen sharing.
Oh, there you are.
Alright. There you go. Okay, so let's see. I apologize, I don't do this often.
Liz, if you just use like either this, I think the spacebar might do it or is sort of the arrow or the enter. That'll take you through your slides. It should just be able to do that. So give that a try.
Can you still see my screen?
No, we're off here. I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute and see if I can pull this up and catch up with you. So go ahead and just start talking and I'm going to see if I can, if I can get.
Amanda, I'm going, I'm sharing it right now. Can you guys see it?
Oh, Tricia, excellent. Thank you so much.
Perfect. Thank you. That's, that's much easier. I'm sorry.
Tricia, you're the best. Thanks.
Okay, so I just wanted to start and talk about transportation here. In our next slide, I shared some pictures in it. Obviously, this year since closure has been very different for us at the Transportation Department. And here are some pictures of our drivers wearing their P P E and our aides wearing their P P E. You know, they've done a really good job getting used to how they have to function under these COVID things. And I just think they're really doing a great job. I thought it'd be nice for you to see some pictures. Can you go to the next slide, Tricia? Alright, so first we're going to start talking about our staffing. Currently, we have 55 routes that are operating daily. 16 routes that service our schools outside of ICSD. So in September and currently now, while ICSD is closed, we're still running 16 routes. We go to BOSI's programs, our Racker Center, Christian Academy, Covenant Love, Blue Sky, Montessori, and our School of the Blind. So we are still very busy. We're still delivering meals and we're still delivering our mail. Right before September, right before we started, we had quite a loss of drivers, actually. We had two people that retired in the first couple of months of school starting. And we had four drivers who decided they would like to deliver mail and not be exposed to children and who received medical excuses. And we had two resignations right before the start of school. And so because of this, we were able to cut five routes in order to run our routes daily. But this was an obstacle we had to overcome in the beginning of the school year. Currently, we have five trainees in place, hoping to get their license soon. And we have 20 bus aides, regular bus aides that receive benefits. We have nine sub aides and then we have one person that's delivering mail as a bus aide. These are just a couple of pictures of the parking lot, why they were tearing that up. That was also something that made our closure very interesting is not only did we have to make changes and put systems in place like our mail delivery and our food delivery, but we had to transition our whole fleet up to the shops at Ethica Mall. So that was very interesting being in that space during that time as well. These are just some of our training sessions. On the top was our training session, our first training session with Carrie and how to use P P E and how to be safe for our staff. And then at the bottom was our normal refresher that we have before we start school and that was held outside. So these were some different training sessions we had. So I just want to talk a little bit about ways transportation has been different this year. We decided that we would put one kid per seat besides right behind the driver. And so our capacity went from 56 students to 17 students unless that students reside in the same household, we allow them to sit together. So changing that capacity has really been difficult to readjust routes and make sure that kids get to all the places that they need. We're constantly readjusting routes, especially as we're adding kids to cohorts. And especially our blue cohorts, which now attend four days a week. So we're constantly working on those routes. Our additional disinfecting procedures that we've put in place that is always extra work for the drivers and aides to make sure that the kids are safe. We've been having flexible assignments for our drivers and aides. So as schools are closing and going virtual, they have been willing to help out and drive other routes in order to maintain drivers on each route. Our meal and mail delivery continues now that school has been open. We did that during the summer. And now during the school year, we're doing our meals once a week instead of on a daily basis. And then our mail, we have four dedicated drivers. But we also have many of our drivers that are delivering mail every day in between their routes to get everything home. One thing I did want to bring up is when we have our drivers quarantined. We had last week, we had a few drivers that were quarantined along with aides and totaling nine staff members. And we were getting very close to the point where if all schools remained open in person, that we would have a difficult time maintaining all of our routes. So I did want to bring that up in the event that we were to tip over more than nine staff members, it could become difficult to get all of our kids in person to all of our schools. Angela, Amanda and I met with a consultant about our state aid reporting. And one thing that came up this year particularly was our other miles calculation. And what we did was we added miles in for our meal and mail delivery. Because there's really no guidance. There's very vague guidance of where we should be adding that to our state aid report. And we discovered that that actually goes against the district in deductions. And so we're working with the consultant in order to make sure that we put those miles in the correct spot to make sure we get the right amount of state aid back. And then this is our bus purchases, which I will be working with Bob to make sure that we have a more final calculation and proposal for you guys. Last year, we decided not to purchase our six full-size gas buses. So we would be asking for six full-size buses just as a first draft proposal and two full-size gas wheelchair buses. At this point, we have one of our full-size wheelchair buses that needs the engine rebuilt. And it would be a much better option to replace that and replace one of the other ones that is is definitely on its way out in 10 years old. So I would say our priority is to probably replace our two full-size wheelchair buses. Now, in this total below, why there's an asterix is because we ordered, we had buses manufactured for us last year that we did not purchase. If in July 1, those buses are still available, we would receive the 2020 pricing, which actually brings the price down. Right now, the bus company, New York Bus Sales, actually has quotes out on those buses. So there's no guarantee July 1st that those buses would be available. So this total is actually on the 2021 pricing. So as we get closer to, you know, a final proposal of buses we want to buy, and we know if those buses are available, we'll be able to get a better price on that for you guys. And Paul will help me if you guys have any questions on this. Normally, I always include our new equipment that actually comes out of our budget, but it's set aside to replace some of Paul's equipment. And this has been decided for this year, what we will be purchasing, we'll be purchasing a new trailer to replace one of our trailers that we already have. We will be purchasing a F-550 truck to replace some of the dump truck and pickup trucks. A one-ton dump truck with a salt spreader because currently we are down a salt spreader going into this winter. An eight-foot roller for the fields, so that way we can flatten out some of the fields and maintain them a little bit better. And then two John Deere's, which we need at the schools to replace ones that they already have that are very close to being on their way out. So electric buses. I just wanted to give you an update on this. I know this has been a question that I've been asked every year during our meetings about bus proposals. We are getting very close. In the past, it's not been feasible for school districts to purchase buses because they've been so expensive. And even leasing them has been a very expensive way to try out these vehicles. Right now, there's a Volkswagen wagon settlement money. It's actually a voucher program through the manufacturers, which allows school districts to buy the buses at the same price as a diesel bus. So if you have a bus that's 10 years or older, which at this time we currently do, you would be eligible to trade that bus in and you could buy electric bus at the same price as you buy a diesel bus. There's also some places that have grant money available for charging stations. And there's a couple types of charging stations. One's a slower charging station, which is runs about $2,000 to $3,000 and could be from a four to eight hour charge. And then our fast charging stations, they can run up to $70,000. So there's definitely a big difference between charging stations. So I bring this up because I think at this point we are not convinced that we are ready to be one of the first districts in New York State to try these out. But as this becomes more affordable for the district, I just would like to start this conversation about how the district wants to move purchasing electric buses.
Hey, Liz?
Yes.
One question, we've always talked about how the electric capacity handles the hills in Ethica and the long distances. Has the technology come up in order for that to be advantageous for us?
So they can travel up to 100 miles on a charge and there are many routes that they would be able to fit on in within our system. I actually demoed a bus. I took a bus out driving it and it performs very well. It's very silent, even quieter than our gas bus. And because we would purchase it, most likely through our same vendor, all options would still be available, just like they are on our gas buses. So I think the technology is definitely there. I just think that we need to do some more research on where our batteries are coming from, how they're made, how long they'll last and what happens when we dispose of them at the end of their life.
Those are great questions. Thank you.
Yeah, maybe if I can just add a little bit to that. We've actually talked to a couple vendors on this VW settlement and some other companies. It's really clear to me that although I don't think it's going to hit us in the 2020-21 budget, I think clearly 21-22, there will be some substantial investments from the federal and state governments to push districts to at least try to invest in some electric buses, if for nothing more than to generate data for the companies. So there's a multiple number of issues I think the full board probably needs to start thinking about so that we can we can figure out what to do. Yeah, I think it was in the New York Times or the Financial Times, one or the other in like 2019, most of the world's cobalt comes from the Congo. And there was about at least 30% of that number was done by child labor and under very tenuous conditions. So I think, you know, the board needs to, we need to start discussing how we're going to deal with that particular issue. And of course, battery disposal, what happens to the batteries when they're, when they're done? And not just recycle, but the third-party recycling, do they eventually end up in a landfill with the toxic chemicals? Also, electricity is not being generated by nuclear power plants in this sector of New York. It's coal burned fire plants that are generating the electricity. So there's, there's that environmental issue. Also, the NiSEG here and other, other gas and electric companies want to bank the electricity and essentially store it in buses that aren't running. And then draw down from our system at peak performance times. And so there is, you know, that, that's where some of this money is coming from in terms of getting districts to buy buses because the gas and electric companies need places to store their excess electrical energy. And I'm sure they're wanting us to do it for free. And I don't think that we necessarily want to store their energy for free. It could be a revenue source. So this is a complicated endeavor. It's not just about the money to buy the buses and making us quote unquote whole in terms of whether it's the same amount of money that a, that a gas or diesel bus would cost. There's significant work that has to be done before we're ready to move forward on this one. And so Liz and I and Amanda will continue to build up a plan of action because I know obviously, we didn't put in the electrical conduit under the pavement for nothing. We want obviously to move forward when it's right and under the conditions that are right. Also, on the buses that we want to purchase, I think just a moment on those. Since I've been here, mechanics and directors have indicated that the useful life of our buses has been significantly hampered because we don't have a paved, a paved area up there for buses to sit on. So obviously, the water would seep up in the dirt and gravel and the undercarriage would rust out much quicker. So we have invested over $2 million in blacktop over there. And I want to be certain, and it might, again, it might not, it might be too early to not buy buses. This year, we might need to buy some, but we need to start prolonging the lifespan of our buses, given that investment in blacktop. So that's why there was that asterix around how many buses we might be purchasing this year. And finally, just a little, a quick update on Liz mentioned, you know, if we, if our quarantine of bus drivers gets above nine, we do have a plan in place, we'll double up runs to the extent that physical distancing can allow. And then ultimately, we'll start to delay the opening of secondary schools. So we'll do the elementary runs and we'll turn those bus drivers right back around and and push them out for secondary. But that could delay secondary up to about a half an hour if, if that were to happen. It came close with nine people in quarantine, but hopefully we've seen the worst of it.
Bob and Liz and Chris, just a quick point about the possibility of at least one electric bus. Back when we switched over to diesel, Liz, I think that might have been prior to you joining us. I had queued up the elementary principals to see who wanted to do some kind of creative learning project with the kids where they would go full out and paint one of the buses and then track the distinctions and the performance and get a little science in and have some fun and become you'll sneak in some environmental education, which I know we're trying to expand. I think the possibilities of doing that with an experimental electric bus would be pretty fantastic. Even this, well, despite all the potentially negative indicators that you guys brought up, if we want our children to understand how the world works, what better opportunity, right? And then to have children understand that what may be good for them here might actually be terrible for other children on the other side of the world. Just something to think about, you know, we've talked about this often when we talk about expending resources for buses, we're talking about the lunch bus, right, the health bus, this would be one more opportunity to expand learning. That's all. Thanks.
No, E, I definitely hear you. I just struggle with Bob's starting comment regarding you know, children in the Congo doing basically child labor to get cobalt. And I think the motherland has been raped and pillaged long enough. And I don't want to be participant to that in any way, shape or form. So I'm struggling just in that first sentence alone. But then he had a long list of, you know, different obstacles in our way. And I'm just going to be honest, I think we've got a few years before this is truly viable to something where we can jump on and really execute at a high level. I, I don't want to do it because it's, it's, you know, the latest and greatest thing. I want to do it where it really serves a purpose within our school district. That's just my, okay, Liz, you still have the floor.
So I just wanted to update you guys on that just because they are, that technology is getting closer where school districts can afford that. And I think Bob has the same, you know, reservations that the board does. So I just wanted to bring that up so we can plan for the future.
So I just wanted to bring that up so we can plan for the future. And I think I believe that that's the end of my presentation. Tricia, is that the last slide?
Yes, it is.
Thank you very much, Liz. Appreciate it. Good information.
Yeah, and if there's any questions anyone has about anything, then I'd be happy to answer them.
So we'll move to five point two uh budget communication and planning.
Chris, before we do, I just wanna, um, wanna just review the request for capital reserve for just a second. So we have, I think it's about, Angela was wonderful and pulled that together. It's one million nine hundred ninety nine thousand dollars. Two hundred and sixty one, and that is funded at its max, right? So if you remember how a cap reserve works, right? We go to the voters, they allow for us to establish one. Up to a certain amount, we've typically asked for up to five th- five million dollars. There's no timeframe on that, um, but typically we sort of, um, ask for the approval for an establishment of a new cap reserve about. I think it's like every three to four years, Rob, I think that's right. And, um, so you know, with that five million, that money ebbs and flows because, you know, Liz will come up with the requests right now. She has a certain idea of what the quotes are, they come in lower, we maybe get more money on our trade ins, right? So we always ask for the amount at least or even a little bit more, cuz you don't wanna ask for too little. Right? Cuz you can't then, you'd have to dip into the general fund to cover that. So, um. So Liz's request right now would essentially be for just a little over a million. So that would leave, you know, about nine hundred ninety thousand dollars. Um, for the following year. This is the year where we would need to establish a new capital reserve. And I would, you know, again, I think that five million dollar range is really nice. We can ask for more, but I think it's a nice. Um, kind of commitment to the community and the taxpayers to show that we're actually very mindful of the amount of money that we put in there. We have a capital project going for a hundred and twenty million, we have our general fund and then we have that. And so I think it's it's good to track that money and it gives us about four to five years of purchasing, um, for buses. And it's a Bob's point as well, you know, we might be able to stretch that a little bit more now with all of the paving work that we've done in that facility. It's a little bit too soon to tell, um, the impact and also any kind of closures that we have if we're doing fewer miles. Right? Um, Liz is probably gonna impact the wear and tear and maybe even better able for the mechanics to get to the work. Um, because they're not, there's not so many buses that they're cycling through the garage each time, right?
Yeah.
I just, I just wanted to talk a little bit about that cap reserve piece, um. So anticipate from us, uh, establishment language, right? Anticipate, so that would be, um, that'd actually be pop proposition three. Proposition two would be the expenditure from the current capital reserve. And then typically the next year, what we would do is whatever money's remaining, we'd actually put that over to the new capital reserve. And, um, sort of use that as seed money or funding for that, um, from from one year to the next. So, um, I think next month, that Liz, you gave us so much to think about. I think next month, what we've typically done is then just review what Liz talked about in terms of her cap reserve request. Because it goes nicely with what Paul is going to request in terms of whatever short term projects, um, and sort of. Um, projects that we wanna look at right away. And so Paul, next month, will be talking about the capital reserve projects that he needs to look at. As well as the hundred thousand dollar capital outlay, which happens in the same year it's funded and then we get state aid back at the same time. At that point in time, then we sort of know what the total request is. And then Liz, we work with you, right? This is the same cycle we've done in the past, say, oh, six is great or eight is okay or seven, maybe we mean the middle, right? And we go from there. But Liz, I just wanna make sure, it sounds as if those two buses that are equipped with the wheelchair lifts are really imperative.
Yeah, they're the priority for this year.
Got it. Okay. Great. Uh, is that okay with the board? Then next month, we'll make sure that this is a, again, the capital reserve will be on agenda item. Liz, you are more than welcome to join us, but you know, I think you and I can talk. Um, or and after that time, and once we know what Paul's needs are in terms of the district and and not being covered by the, uh. The capital project will have a better sense. Fair enough? Great. Thank you. Sorry, Chris, I had to, I had to get that in there.
No, no, no. I I appreciate it. So is now a good time to move to five point two?
Definitely.
All right, budget communication and planning.
So again, I'm I'm gonna look to you, um, all of you, especially, um. I know that last year, and just like every year, right? But last year, there was a lot of dialogue about the budget. Um, through social media. And so, um, it it felt like and it reality was that. Board members were receiving a lot of. Um, which were wonderful, filtered then to the business office. We then answered those questions as quickly as we could. I think the turnaround was actually pretty good. Considering, um, we were trying to get them within, you know, twenty four hours to forty eight hours and then posting them on the website. And then I know many board members would take that information and then push it out through their own social media. And so, you know, from for me and and Chris, when we were talking about sort of putting this agenda together. That focus on talking about communication strategies around the budget needs to happen now, right? Not in that heat of the moment. Right? When, um, when we've done the budget presentation, if somebody can make the board meeting or not. Um, and maybe trying to capture a lot of this information and push that out prior to. Um, you know, the nature of people talking maybe with fact or maybe with things that they heard that they then felt like it. Got some legs and became fact. And we don't want that, right? We want real facts to get out there. Obviously, there's a lot of questions that we can't answer at this moment because the budget's not developed. But there's a lot of questions about budget development itself and how the numbers sort of come together and why transfers are from one to the other are made. And, you know, there are a lot of other means that we don't utilize to our advantage. Um, one of which, right, is maybe creating now short videos and they don't have to be just me. Um, you know, of of, uh, board members or business office staff talking about particular topics that go into budget. And have those readily available to the community. That was just one idea. Um, maybe we could talk to some of the student reps from the board who might wanna interview us and maybe gather a few questions and. And we can work that uh way. Um, you know, those are just two things that I sent to Chris off the top of my head. Um, but that that link that I gave you in this, in the agenda. Are really the questions that kept coming up over and over again, time and again, over, you know, multiple budget processes. So we'll have to get answers to those questions either now or eventually. Chris?
So, no, just and I'm going to be quite frank and honest and upfront. My ultimate goal is to stop the misinformation that was put out. That's my ultimate goal, because there were some questions or comments that came up, especially via social media, that were blatantly dishonest and untrue. Okay, and I I do understand that our budget process is complicated. There are some things that happen on a regular basis that, you know, folks just don't see and don't understand. Um, and there were even comments and questions about equity issues and how the money gets spent. And I welcome them and I welcome the ability to clarify things. And I think that's our ultimate goal, especially starting now. And creating that dialogue and that opportunity. But my true goal is to stop the misinformation and the blatant. Intention of spewing misinformation out there to the public. Cuz that's an unhealthy thing and I don't want that for our school district. And I know folks work extremely hard. To keep this school district operating and running in such an efficient manner and to, you know, answer. Questions that don't apply or really, you know, we have a huge budget, absolutely. How that money gets spent and how we apply it is extremely important for the public to understand. And when they're, and we know how social media works. You know, oh, of course it's true, I saw it on the internet. Well, that's not really the facts. So that's my ultimate goal. Amanda, I commend you for being, um, as diplomatic as you are and I'll take the heat on this one. I'm sure my emails will be filled up tomorrow. That's my ultimate goal.
Uh, let me, let me just chime in and add to what Chris is saying. Amanda, you're using a key phrase from my experience last year. Uh, push out, right? There's a huge difference in this, um, current media environment between. What I felt we were doing last year, which is, uh, being, uh, having passive. It having information at people's disposal in a passive way. Now, who who would have guessed that Twitter and Facebook and email and our website. Would be considered passive, you know, in this environment, but that's what it seemed like. The information that people wanted to know was, uh, ninety five percent there. And like Chris is saying, people made up the other five percent in the vacuum. So I'm curious about exploring ways to. Be more proactive and push information out when we have it, to head off nonsense. And to give people frankly, a a better basis from which to ask better questions. Um, now I know it must be frustrating as hell for our leaders to say, but we've done X, Y, and Z. Why don't people just do A, B, and C? I can't answer that, but I can pretty much, uh, guess that in this heightened political environment. With the pandemic, with pressures. People trying to figure out how to eat, childcare, all the things we know. I think it's gonna be more essential that we actually figure out ways to, like you said, push the information out.
No, E, thank you. And actually, I wanna say a late thank you for all the legwork you did getting that information and pushing it out. And you know, Erin brought a lot of. Conversation to this, really just being transparent and we we've been in this a while. We've been grinding at this. And and so some things come second nature to us and we assume that folks already know this. So we need to push out in a way where folks can understand or but also reach us. And say, I've had this question all along, how can I ask this? You know, and and meet the folks where they are at.
You know, uh, the the strange, um, I hate saying silver lining, but. The one thing we have going for us, being that we're in this pandemic and this hell that we're living in. Is that i- it's a lot more accessible for families to participate. Um, in this format. And this is a really great chance for us to say, hey, come on over, you can have your kids in the background, put your headphones on. Grab a glass of wine with Pat and uh kick back. Um, but you know, in all seriousness, like, we can promote this in a way where, you know, like, I've said before. Eldred and I are on Facebook, I know Nicole's on Facebook, there's certain groups we participate in. And say, listen, here's your chance, you guys, you know, for years, we've been hearing that you want a transparent budget process. You don't have to come to a meeting, you can sit in your own home and listen to these meetings now. And, you know, that the chance for people to participate on Tuesdays is there. And I know that that information is on the website and I know that, you know, Tricia sends out emails and it's there. But I I think that we can be even more intentional. And board members can just promote this on their own personal sites and on the places on the interwebs that we hang out and say, hey. Come on and join us and and learn about this. Um, this is a really good time, we're all laying low.
Well, my ultimate goal is to really get ahead and kind of, you know, every upcoming meeting, we have a bank of questions that we can. So we can do the legwork and say, oh, we received these in January, we speak to them in February, you know, so we're way ahead of this. And create that ongoing dialogue. But also, like you said, folks don't have to come out of their house and take their kids with them. They can kick them out to us and we can share it forward to the public. That's my ultimate goal. So Amanda. Think we're ready for you.
So the ultimate question is, what? What do you need from me in terms of, I mean, obviously, I'm happy to lead every, right? Whatever you need, I am the budget, right? The the sort of the keeper of the keys in terms of the 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 process, right? And in terms of the welcoming people, inviting people, setting up the meetings, I'm happy to do that. That's really, that's what we do and we give it structure. We give it, we put numbers on a page, we tell the story as best we can, right? The nar- the narrative and the realities, we try to give as much fact and information as possible. So, you know, again, this can be an ongoing conversation, but I think. For me, um, you know, I can, I I have Casey, who's our communications person. And we can, I can work with her together to try to tweak things out more, um, and try to push things out more. But I guess I'm also wondering. Are there other methods that that we, I need to be putting sort of on the plate? That, right, we're going to, like, you know, on Tuesdays, we do this and then the second Friday of every month, we do this and, right? So, um, I I it's not that I'm, I'm looking for, um, the exact how to. But I think maybe a couple of ideas that I can sort of vet around here to see like what what what's our bandwidth? And like, do we have the resources here that we can actually do that? Do we need to look to partners to do it, right? So those are the sorts of things that I'm just, I'm just checking in on to make sure that I'm, um, cuz every year and and, you know. Erin, Rob, uh, Eldred, Chris, you know, Pat, I, like, every year I've tried to do something new, right? At least one thing, if not a couple, where we've sort of tried to improve that budget development process to make it more participatory. And also more transparent.
My opinion, oh, go ahead, you go. But I just think we start with the frequently asked questions, especially the ones that came up in the past. Um, but I think the accessibility and the opportunity to hear from the public is the most important thing. So how do we create that that, um, that dialogue and that opportunity to hear from them?
And, you know, I've been doing this, we've had to change how we do things at work for my job. And I've been doing a lot of Facebook Lives to engage our audience. And we're, I mean, our reach is pretty phenomenal. Um, and it's a really easy format and people can comment in the lives and you can have a moderator. So it's not so much like Zoom where people are chiming in, but people can comment, you're in a live, you're having a conversation. Um, and it's kind of a nice way to utilize social media, you know, perhaps, uh, you, depending on what groups are out there, you know. There are different Facebook groups you can share to at pick times. I would be curious as well to talk to building principals. I know at least at Northeast. Um, they host family nights at various schools and I'm curious what the turnout is for those. Cuz I know that i- in our house, we're tapped out, we don't join in on those. But if they do get a lot of participation, that might be a nice avenue to like. Cut, you know, maybe take a different angle on family night and come in just for like thirty minutes to say, hey, I'm here to talk about the budget. What do you wanna know? And and reach out to the building principals to see how we can engage with, engage with families. And if there's interest in the schools in those family nights. Um, what we're seeing is that there is a level of screen fatigue, right? Where people just, unless they absolutely have to do something on Zoom, they're not gonna do it. So I would hate to go to the trouble of setting something up to have no one show. So to see. Where we have these audiences already built is a really good thing to promote the meetings we're already having and saying, hey, guys. Join us, we're talking about this, we want you to participate. And then ask them at that meeting, is there interest in this? You know, I don't, I know we're swamped with surveys, but I'd be curious if we did some sort of ICSD. Really brief, brief survey saying, hey, we want you to engage more in the budget this year. Are you interested? What's a good time? You know, sort of doodle poll kind of thing. Uh, you know, I think that's a really great way to do it.
All right, here would be my additional suggestion. Um. Amanda, you're absolutely right. You, although I want, although I want all of us to be more proactive. You can't do anything until you know what the questions are, right? Um, I'm gonna suggest that Erin and I start with the document you put together last year. And sort of refine that. And then maybe we get with Nicole. And whoever else on the board is an active social media user. And we push that out on our various listeners. Uh, between four groups, I probably have access to forty thousand people. Eh, air quotes in this community, right? The groups are part of this community, but I don't know where these people are from. And we just begin to solicit conversation. If we do that now, we might be able to head off seventy five percent of the questions. And when we find what those twenty five percent are. And when we find what those twenty-five percent are, and they're they're going to be there because this is a new environment. Then we ask you to um do your magic and create a document. That may be more visual than usual, that may be simpler, that may use more uh everyday language. And then we start sharing these. The more we can share your information. In the way that most people can understand, I think the better served everyone is. See, to Erin's point, um, maybe people, maybe more people could. Maybe more people don't have the bandwidth, right? Maybe they can't after a day of doing what she's doing with her little one right now and try to get them educated. Um, so that would be my suggestion and I'm willing to work with Erin and Chris. And get the first sort of um to see what we got, see where we are. See what we think will work as far as those big questions. And uh and begin pre- putting those out there into your universe right now and see what kind of questions come back. One thing I'll take away, last thing I'll say is one takeaway for me, for one takeaway from me concerning last year. Some of the questions were great. It just needed a different interpretation of the way we normally disseminate information. To Chris's point, of course, there were uh people trying to poison the well, but you know, other than that, that uh ridiculous stuff, some of the questions are actually really good. Um, and maybe we get Pat to start disseminating information because right now she looks like a spy. So maybe she's, it'll be right up her alley, start getting that secret information out there.
Sorry, Eldred, I I I'm I'm backlit. I had to uh, I had to go into another room because Zenon's conducting a final exam online. And uh, and I haven't figured out my lighting yet, but I am, I am literally not connecting with anyone on social media. So so I'll, I will, I will leave it to you pros, um, see what we can do, but supportive of the work.
If I may, and and let Erin, this is a situation, I'm really looking to lean on your expertise. Um, maybe even before we go into what we're going to share with our community or propose to our community. We do some work on our, on the backend to understand um the wisdom of crowds in this new medium. This will be new, governing in this way, presenting information in this way, opening up a forum in this way to the, to an audience. Who may not necessarily be connecting with us any other time, um, who may have a history of connection with the school district. I mean, it, I I I would love to see us spend some time really mapping out um the research, the examples. Um, best practices before we put it out to our community because, I don't know, maybe, maybe in the role I'm in. Um, I can see how this can be tough. Um, and it can be not constructive but destructive if we're not very, very careful. Again, I'm I'm going to be leaning on the expertise on this call and if we need to consult with other folks. What I don't want to have is to have some public shaming or some public situ- uh some public opportunity for folks to air their grievances. And it distract us from what we're intending to do as far as governance. Hope I'm making some sense here. I'm all in for it, but I I just want it to be very, very careful. Because on our communications end, when we're doing other things, we've had to be very thoughtful and careful and we've learned a lot of lessons.
Well, you know, Dr. Brown, I totally agree there. We we have to be very careful because the anonymity that. The internet provides leads to a lot of nastiness. Um, you know. And uh, we we can discuss this further at some point. I know that um, the one nice thing with the Facebook Lives that we do is. It's done through Zoom, so it's only the people you choose to actually be on camera. And you can limit comments and have a moderator taking care of comments. To make sure there's nothing vulgar, nothing harmful, nothing that um compromises privacy. And and keep it light. Um, and you can do rehearsals into doing that sort of thing. Because I agree, you have to be very careful and in this environment, people just, it can be cruel. So, yeah.
So here's an example of um the potential cruelty in a way to prepare for it, not that we can eliminate it. Um, Rob, I don't know how many paid boards you've been on. I've been on enough to know. That the distinction between the leader's salary and a average um employee's salary is a constant refrain. Nobody, that seems to be the way the world has been taught, right? To measure whether or not you're evil, you're an evil organization. This is just an example. Last year, I don't think we really went this far. But maybe we explain to people, right, that an average corporate uh ratio to lowest paid employee's salary in the real world is. Can sometimes be two hundred, two hundred times. And in our situation. It's, I don't know, I if I had a guess, I would guess it's, it's um much closer to something like four to one. Or or five to one. Chris, you probably have experienced this too. So there's one example of of real life information where people are, we should expect people are going to be pissed. We know they're going to be pissed about administrative positions in addition to salaries, right? We know they're going to want to know certain things and, you know, working with Erin, this language is not my expertise. You know, I'm a good communicator, but I don't even pretend it on the best, knowing how to communicate in this new world, like Lovell said. But I damn sure can anticipate the questions and uh and don't mind being brave enough to just deal with them head on. Because we know they're coming.
No, I I I agree with you and thanks for these comments. I think, one, our intention is education. And to really get ahead and answer questions. Um, E, you are dead on with, you know, some of the intentionality. Of, hold on, it's, oh, sorry, I had a dog that needed to, um, you know. And like Erin said, folks use this as an opportunity just to be mean. Um, you know, our intention is to educate on the budget process, address longstanding questions. And um really be transparent, uh, you know, and not hopefully. Not engage in folks who have an ulterior motive or an agenda, but that's what we run into every year. Um, and E, you're one hundred percent correct when you talk about the the corporate salaries and and those disparities. And how we operate. And I always, I said this and I'll be totally transparent. If we want to talk about salaries, that's one conversation. If we want to talk about the budget and what truly goes into this budget, that's a whole nother conversation. Um, and and the opinions and the views beyond that are a different dialogue. Um, but I think there's ways we can, if our ultimate goal is to educate the public and be transparent. And create a dialogue, I think there's ways we can do it in a healthy manner. Um, Erin raised some great points. I think you folks actually navigated this well. I am not on any social media. And I will not be getting on any social media, so I will be relying on you folks for that.
Hey, um, hey, Chris, uh, I certainly admire your um determination to get out in front. Uh, and and get information out. You know, I frankly, I guess probably Dr. Brown and I talked about this a little bit. But the the essential question we always have to present is, you know. Shall the people of this community, you know, support a hundred and forty million dollars next year to do what? Um, and I think we're going to have a significant portion of the community saying, okay, what did I, what did I get for my? You hear it all the time. What did I get for my tax dollars? My kids are at home. There's no sports. They didn't get to be in band. They didn't do. We can't control that, but now we're going out again and, you know, supporting a budget. And so we're going to have to address that, um, you know, that no one has gotten the value that we would expect. From the district. Um, what is it going to look like in the next year? And uh, so we're going to have to talk about that. We're going to have to talk about, you know. What uh, what did we spend all, what did we spend a hundred thirty-six million dollars on? And transportation was a good example of delivering meals and and delivering, you know, potentially. Homework and assignments and trans, you know, being that connective piece between teachers and children. And that's the only way was through a a driver driving to your house. And so what is, how are we going to, well, how are we going to sell the budget, right? I think that, Chris, and I think it's great to start early and and deal with what everyone's going through and continues to go through.
No, Rob, you raised a great point because you just said, how we do and navigate. This pandemic situation within the school district ain't free. To go from fifty-six kids on a bus to seventeen, you know, and spread people out, you know, adds expenditure. So that's the type of conversation that we need to start having. Uh, but also create that dialogues because folks are asking those questions. You raised a great, you know, great point.
Right, and it goes right back to staffing. How do we do a hybrid, you know, hybrid learning? Well, we have to hire more staff, right? And we can't, how do you do both? Well, it takes more. So I think it's all those questions are are going to be asked and so just to be upfront about it. So um, we always, we're open, Chris, but um, really, it's a great uh, great that you are taking the lead here. Finance is taking the lead to to address all the issues that we deal with every day. And hopefully get through, uh, and everybody have a great Christmas and we can, uh, everybody, everybody, the whole organization should just take a break. You know, just uh, try to recover a bit, right, Dr. Brown?
If I could just weigh in for a couple of minutes on the question of of communication. And what what everybody's saying about framing the argument. I'm not on social media, but you know, what what I am going to share is what I learned from. Twenty years in and out of family court with a lunatic ex-husband. And that is that that reality is not the narrative. That the narrative is what people want to know. And and one of the, one of the things I've noticed with, in my ten years on the board, is that we're very much. We frame it from an insider's point of view, you know, we're in all of these committees. We are, we are having all of these in-depth conversations. And there are seventeen participants in this conversation. And you know, most of them are board members and um executive staff. And we, what we we really, really need to be addressing. What, what? Um, you know, our our constituency wants to know. And I'd, I don't even know what that is, except for talking with my neighbors on the street and and family members. And it's more and more difficult this year because I don't even get to go into the office and listen to people. And so the idea of, you know, fr- framing a narrative. You know, not to be dishonest, but to be honest, but to realize what ordinary people are concerned with. Every, every year that there have been budget negotiations with the ITA. You know, we get these, we, in the past, we would get these teachers in our board meetings who would stand up and. Spout to me what seemed to be gibberish and nonsense about, you know, this cl- this obscure clause. And that obscure clause and and who's being paid what. And you know, it didn't make sense to us and I don't think it made sense to any of of the. Um, I would say average inhabitants of Ithaca. But it made sense to the teachers' union somehow. And I feel like when we were making our budget points, they were feeling as alienated from us. As when they were making their budget points. And and we need to find that kind of common communicative ground to say, what is, what is really important? And a lot of that is, I think you're all right, going to be, you know, what were these additional costs? And what was beyond our control and what did we have to do? And how did we meet that? And and try to get like outside of our our inner circle, I think, more than we have in in previous years. Pat, to that point, I might have said this before, but I always remind myself, and this is easy for me as a new person, still, two years, I still feel very new. But um, when I worked in radio, we would always talk about how um. You're playing a song every single day, but the people listening to your station, you're sick of it, they're just catching on to it. And I think when we talk about what the budget, that's what we have to keep in mind. We all know we are hearing it all the time. But people tuning in, their kid might be in kindergarten and it's the first time they're hearing it. So it's old hat to us, but it's very new to them. And I've got an actor here gesturing along with me. No, I I agree with you completely, Erin. It's um, it it is, it is really all about the audience. And I'm just going to share, that's one reason I won in family court is I understood that better than anyone else who was in there, even my own lawyer.
I just want to add to Rob's point. Uh, this is a year where I don't, I don't feel. This won't be retreading old territory to me in some ways because I don't know the answers to some of these questions myself. Pat, I don't know how this year has affected um children's admissions prospects, right? Where they can't go visit a campus. And I don't know how it's affected athletes' matriculation in the colleges, Rob, right? Where they haven't had a year of football on the, I I don't have any answers to this question. So if a citizen is asking a question about why should they pay full value for their taxes? When they didn't, where they weren't provided these traditional opportunities, I'm looking for y'all. I'm looking for Dr. Brown to answer that. I ain't got no answer. I I can imagine it must be incredibly uh anxious, intense time for. For seniors and juniors trying to make that transition.
Well, you know, part of this conversation in December is really for us to try to get ahead of this. Once we hit twenty twenty-one, create the dialogue, um, and really not package it. But put it together in such a way where it's useful for the public, you know, but also useful for us. We understand what, like Erin said, you know, it's it's an old song to us, but it's new conversation to them, you know. And I'm sure we'll, they're all out there wondering certain questions and, or or, you know, they have these long-held beliefs. But I am looking at the clock and out of respect for time for everyone, I'm going to try to move this forward unless anybody has any other comments or questions. All right. Amanda, was that helpful at all?
Yes, it is, absolutely. So I think we'll just, I I it's, if it's up to you, I think we should just um keep this as a standing agenda item. Right? And then that way we can always check in to make sure whatever it is that month that we want to be pushing out. Um, I I think it means a little homework for all of us, right? Just sort of thinking ahead of like, okay, what does January mean for taxpayers? What does February mean for taxpayers? Um, and and trying to get that information. And what I've heard is already to start. Um, and and I'm, you know, this is the exec team, Dr. Brown's leadership of, you know, school. Although not looking traditional. The both costs and value of that.
We'll talk more about that.
Yeah, I mean, we had to, but we had to give you some information. It sounds as if. And that you're going to need around that, right?
I do think that's a a critical point, Amanda, both cost and value. And I'm, you know, in 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 my little neighborhood, which. But in my little neighborhood, which is the only place, place I talk with people, nobody's complaining in in large scale. I mean, they might have little complaints, but they are appreciative of their kids' ability to go to school. They're appreciative by and large of, they're, they're appreciative of what the district's offering. They're not always appreciative at the the middle school and high school level of what some individual teachers are offering. But they are, you know, no, nobody's chewing me out. So.
That's a great, that's a great way to end the meeting. I think that's a, how how better, how better to leave and go on home and do do stuff. Thank you, Pat. But Chris, it's your meeting.
No, thank you, Rob.
Great meeting, Chris.
Yes, and uh, great conversation. Thanks, everyone. Any questions? Um, we've got the agenda setting next week, uh, next month, sorry. Um, you know, facilities, we'll be sharing. Um, and we'll have much more dialogue with with this Amanda and I'll get together and put, frame some things to creep, keep this going. Um, but I want to wish you a good evening and please, you know, there's inclement weather coming, please be. But I want to wish everyone a good evening. Um, and please, you know, there's inclement weather coming. Please be safe and stay warm.
Thanks, everybody.
Everybody, everybody, everybody shop a green star for the next few days.
Teacher gifts at Green Star. Tomorrow, Eldred, we'll be there tomorrow.
You guys shop, I'll personally put your groceries in your car.